We can go ahead and get started.
Well, you're talking to you, man. You're talking to you.
My name's Keith Fouts. I'm a publisher of the Early Bird and Good Bagged Media, which is a big title for I'm the guy that changes the light bulbs and fixes the toilets, sweeps the floors, sell an ad or two occasionally, and come and get the pleasure of doing these type of events. I want to say first off, special thanks to our friends at the BRC for letting us use their facilities, very appreciative for that. Also want to give a shout out to Baca Rock because they donated the sound system to us. Appreciate that, and I want to give a special thank you to both Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Stegall for the willingness to participate. Both candidates have been provided with the rules to debate. There's going to be a three-minute introduction with each candidate, and then at the end there'll be a two-minute conclusion. Questions are going to be alternated between the candidates. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer, and the other candidate will be provided with one minute for rebuttal. My wife and I will be in the back of the room letting them know when their time is about up because it's important to us to try to keep this as close to being on track if we can. Also state that neither candidate's been provided with a preview of the questions. Ryan Berry, our managing editor, has done some extensive research to try to be able to pose the questions. It's important to Dark County. So without any further ado, all you have to think I'd ask is, do you have your cellphones on? Please silence them or turn them on to vibrate for us. With that, I will turn it over to moderator, Mr. Berry.
Before we came up here, we did flip a coin to see who would go first, and Mr. Stegall will be going first for the opening question and also for his three minutes to introduce himself, and then at the end, their closing statements. Mr. Kennedy will have time to do, he will go first on the closing statements. So, Mr. Stegall, please, three minutes.
Thank you. Well, thanks to the Early Bird for doing this. It's always a pleasure to be able to talk to people and let them know what we're all about here in Dark County, and I want to thank Keith and you too, Ryan. Well, my name is Mike Stegall, and I've been a Dark County Commissioner now for eight years. Before that, for five years, I was Greenville Township Trustee. I ran because I was asked to run because at that time, the county was in pretty bad shape. People thought I could help because I had helped the township. This is more than a job to me. This is my home, and I want to keep it that way. When I got elected the first time on election night, after all the press and everybody left my house, I think it was about 2:00 in the morning, I looked at myself and said, "Now what are you going to do?" I had said about eight or nine things that I really wanted to accomplish, but then I was told to narrow them down to three. Those three things were fiscal responsibility, economic collaboration, and if it's broke, fix it. In the last eight years, I've adhered to that, and I'm going to stick to it. I think that's a good philosophy to have. Fiscal responsibility, we have been. We come in under budget every year. We grow our budget every year. We keep things going and growing here in Dark County. In the last eight years, we've had over $267 million worth of economic growth. We've had over $65 million worth of payroll saved and created. We've done very well here in Dark County. Economic collaboration, we're one of the few counties in the state of Ohio that has everybody rowing the boat in the same direction, and you have no idea how hard that is and how special that is because the people at the County Commissioner's Association of Ohio have told us, "Nobody's doing what you're doing in Dark County." And the third thing was, if it's broke, fix it. Sometimes it takes a little longer than what we like. Sometimes the wheels of government turn very slowly, but we are fixing. In the last eight years, we have put a lot of money into our old buildings and all of our infrastructure, modernizing computers. We're catching up. It's going to be an ongoing problem, but I think we can handle it. On May the 8th, I would appreciate if you would all take a look at what we've done here in Dark County in the last eight years and say, "Yeah, there's no reason to change. Let's stay the course," and I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy? Well, my name is John Kennedy. For the past 17 years, I have been working with this county trying to get a, my winery established. For the past five years, I've done that. I have been in the Dark County area back again for five years. I lived away for a while. I was in the military for quite some time. I also lived in Columbus for a while. My main reason for running for County Commissioner is because I had a few people ask me as well if I would do that. They've met me, they've talked to me, they knew my integrity, and they asked me if I would run. So I decided with my family, my wife, and my family's support that I would. The things that I would like to see, you know, Dark County is a great place. Don't get me wrong. I love it. I also see some things that need to be changed and things that seem to need to be better. One thing is, I think that the Commission and the people need to be more informed. I know that you can request and get requests, but I think that transparency is a big thing. Also, the drug problem in the city, in the county, is a large concern and a large problem to me as well. I've talked to several people who feel that, yes, we're doing a good job and thinks it could be better. So those are my talking points, and thank you.
Okay. The first question, we're going to do this one, they're both going to get the same question, and I said they have two minutes. We talked about this, and they have two minutes to answer this question, and it kind of goes towards the transparency issue that Mr. Kennedy alluded to, and it's been discussed before in the county. Do you believe Dark, and we'll start with Mr. Stegall, do you believe Dark County Commission meetings should be available live on YouTube or Facebook, or at least video recording of the meetings be posted on YouTube or Facebook in a timely manner? Should the county have a link to the MP3 files of its meetings available on the Commission website? Mr. Stegall, two minutes.
Modern technology is wonderful, and I believe we should utilize it in every way we possibly can. I have no objection to doing everything over the air. What we've got to do is look into it, see what the cost is, how we want to do it, how do we want to present it to the public? The public can come in anytime and watch one of our Commission meetings, but they also probably need the people that need to stay home and can't get there, they probably need to have it online. I would have no problem with doing that. As a matter of fact, we are kind of looking into that right now to try to get, see what it's going to cost us, but at this time, it is so hard to find somebody that can actually come up and give you a quote. But we're working on it. Yeah, I have no problem with putting it online. I have no problem with getting people whatever they want, MP3, whatever. I don't see a problem with it at all.
Mr. Kennedy, same question. Do you believe Dark County Commission meetings should be available live on YouTube or Facebook, or at least a video recording of the meetings be posted on YouTube or Facebook in a timely manner? Should the county have a link to the MP3 files of its meetings available on the Commission website?
Absolutely. I think that everything should be done, that the Commission's doing, I think everything should be done in the public eye. I think, you know, unfortunately, and most counties are like this, the times that they held their meetings, it's not feasible for everyone to make it there. So in order for these people to be able to see it without having to come down and order a CD and things like that, it would be, and it can be saved where they can watch it at any time. Even just a transcript of the Commission minutes can be posted on the Internet, you know, just so people know what's going on, and maybe even a link to what's going to be talked about at the Commission meetings might be nice to see. So when people want to come to a Commission meeting, they can see if it's something that they'd be interested in talking about.
Okay, now we'll get into the real question, that was a real question, but the debate questions, and on this one, you will have three minutes to answer, and then one minute rebuttal, and if a second rebuttal is needed, then another minute. And this will go to Mr. Stegall, and it continues on the line of transparency. The Yellow Book released by the Ohio Attorney General states rules regarding public records and public meetings that elected officials must follow. Although the Ohio Opens Meeting Act in Chapter 1, Section B defines a meeting as "a pre-arranged gathering of a majority of the members of a public body for the purpose of discussing public business," it further states, "unless two members constitute a majority, isolated one-on-one conversations between individual members of a public body regarding its business, either in person or by telephone, do not violate the Opens Meeting Act. However, with the way the Commission office is set up, with all three members in one office, does this, does that take advantage of the spirit of the law and suggest impropriety that the Commission could be discussing public business behind closed doors and not in open session?"
Absolutely not. Anybody can walk in our office any time. Our doors are open. You're allowed to come in and sit and listen to what we're talking about. We have never, ever, in Dark County, had a Sunshine Law violation, and we're very proud of that. We are very open. We do a lot of things. Every month, I write Commissioner's Corner. Every month, I do a coffee with the Commissioner. The reason I do that is because I want people to come and ask questions and see what we're doing. But if you'd like, our doors are open every day. People come in all the time. They come in, sit down, talk to us about anything, or hear what we're talking about. We are very, very open, and I'm very proud of that.
Mr. Kennedy? I've been to a couple of the Commission meetings, and to me, I see that, and from what I've talked to other people, they only last between seven to 10 minutes per meeting. I went, I had an opportunity, I was invited to come down to Preble County on Monday, and I went down there and watched one of their Commission meetings. It was six hours, and they opened their mail in their Commission meeting. I mean, they talk about everything right there, and it's recorded 24/7, and anybody can be there, and anybody can see it, and like I said, they even have a list every morning before their Commission meeting of what's going to be discussed, so you know. So, you know, I think we should, could take an example from them as to how our Commission meetings could be run.
Mr. Stegall, one minute.
I'm not sure anybody wants to sit through a six-hour meeting. I know I sure don't. The way we do it in Dark County is, we get all of our information in, we decide, the girls decide what's going to be on the roster for the day, what we're going to have in our sessions. Reason why it takes us six or seven minutes because we've already decided what we're going to put out there. If you want to see more detail, all you have to do is ask. We like to hit the highlights, but we also are very complete with what we tell you. You know exactly what money we're spending. You know exactly where it's going. You also know what we talked about. So I think we do a very good job of it. I'm sure nobody in here wants to sit through a six-hour meeting. I know, I sure don't. So I want to be as efficient and as good as we can be.
All right. Moving on, Mr. Kennedy, this is your question, and you will have three minutes on this one. In a thread when people were discussing the closing of the Beanery, you alluded to the reasons of Brenda's Beanery closing was upgrades required by the city. The thread got a little heated, and you said, "I'm not about the way our system works. Our system is broken, taking kickbacks and bribes is part of the system. God bless, take care. I'm not going to be a part of this back-and-forth banter. I am a one-on-one, face-to-face kind of guy." By what you were saying, are you saying local government officials are getting kickbacks and bribes, or what did you mean by your comment? And do you have validation that this is taking place?
I think, taking anything anybody says 100% serious on Facebook, I think, I mean, I was really frustrated at the time that we're having to close the Beanery. I'd sunk thousands of dollars into this operation and tons of time, and I, you know, the back-and-forth banter on that Facebook page becomes completely ridiculous. You know, what I said was probably more in anger than anything else. I don't really think that I meant anything by the kickbacks or bribes. My frustration with local and city governments were the Health Department and the City Water requesting upgrades to the building that, you know, the building owner should make. So that's what that was about.
Mr. Stegall?
People in public office are constantly ridiculed, beat down, talked about. We can take the personal insults. Heck, everybody, I've been called fat and everything else. I mean, I can't argue with that. What I don't like is being called a crook, and that comment that Mr. Ryan refers to was made, and then their comment after that was, "Surely you're not talking about the county commissioners and all the elected officials." Mr. Kennedy refused to answer that question. I want to tell you, that hurt a lot of people. Our people are good, they're honest, they work hard. People in Dark County, you have no idea how lucky you are to have the good people we've got in our government. These people are excellent at their jobs, and there's darn few in the state that are as good as they are, and if you don't believe that, call the County Commissioners Association. They'll tell you just how good our people are. Our engineer and our auditor are two of the most respected people in this state along with Scott Zumbreak, the treasurer. They're very well-respected. So that really hurt.
Anything else? Like I said, the comment was made in a thread of a back-and-forth banter after the closing of the Beanery, so it was not meant personally. I understand it was taken that way, and that was, that was not the point of the conversation. So I apologize if I hurt anyone's feelings.
Moving on, Mr. Stegall. You have been accused of being arrogant, condescending, and manipulative. Justly or unjustly, the perception exists, at least in the minds of some of your constituents. Please explain how you can be an effective leader when a portion of your constituents believe you to be arrogant, condescending, and manipulative.
This is a tough business. You cannot please everybody. You cannot, you cannot be fake with people either. I am who I am. I am a jokester, and I can come off as arrogant. I know that. I don't mean to be, and I don't intend to be, but I am never, ever going to please 100% of the people in this county. People are going to like me, people are going to hate me. That is my personality. But you can rest assured that what I do and what I say, unless I tell you directly, I'm joking around with you. I probably make more fun of myself than anybody else that I know, if you don't blame me, and ask the people in our office. I do it a lot to make them laugh and to help them get along with their day. So as far as being arrogant and condescending, I can see where people would say that, but that's not really my nature, and that's not really my personality. If you get to know me, you'll know that.
Mr. Kennedy?
I really don't have a comment about that one.
All right. Then on to you. On December 30th, you wrote on your Facebook parade, "Great read. This is why I am running. We need to put a handle on this spending," and you linked to a narrative on another Facebook page that stressed there were several appropriations to the Dark County Airport, but the Commission should spend more money on roads and bridges. This same narrative also opposed the increase of the license fee. So do you feel the spending should be cut back, increased, or used in a different manner? Where do you believe the money should come from?
For the airport?
For whatever this was talking about, just spending, I guess, overall, for roads, for bridges, for the airport, for...
I mean, funding comes from a multitude of sources. My concern with the way things are being funded in Dark County is going to be different than what anybody else feels that. I think that our concern should be focused on, yes, job development, yes, and getting people here into Dark County and bringing people in, strengthening our infrastructure, strengthening our community, strengthening the jails, the rehab facilities, things like that, things that help our community as a whole. Yes, I know, building a stronger airport, some people say that, oh, yes, well, that'll bring more jobs, things like that, but there was never an impact study done on whether or not lengthening the airport would bring more jobs. We got some letters from some corporations in support of making an airport larger, but I just think that there's a lot, and I understand it's not, that the FAA is going to pay back that money, but there's a lot to that as well. There's no guarantee that the FAA is going to pay back that money. You know, that's, we have to apply for a grant, and that's not guaranteed. So I just think that the concern and the focus should be elsewhere, and in more places that'll help Dark County as a whole.
Mr. Stegall?
Three things. Number one, if we apply for a grant, we don't get it, we don't do the project. Number two, grant money for the FAA and road money are two separate funds, and they cannot be put together. Road funds come from auto license and gas tax. That is a separate fund that Mr. Server runs himself, carries about a $5 million balance every year, and does about $5 million worth of work. Airport funds, we get from the FAA and Ohio ODOT Aviation. Those funds are separate. We are not allowed to mix them. We cannot mix them, and we are audited like you would not believe to make sure that those funds are spent the same way. As far as doing everything for the airport or helping to get jobs in here, that's our job. Our job is to put people back to work, and our job is to watch for the safety of the county. I want everybody in Dark County before I leave to have a job. That's why we expand, that's why we do what we do.
Mr. Kennedy, anything else? Okay. Moving on to Mr. Stegall, and this continues on the airport issue. You said in an interview with the Early Bird for the February 25th edition, "The county's entire business community can benefit from the airport extension. How will the county and its people benefit, and how will you validate that success? Are there markers in place that you must reach in order to call it successful?"
In 2009, the state of Ohio did a study on what is important to businesses. In the top eight categories, number four was airports, and number eight was general aviation airports. How we are going to determine if it's been good for Dark County is by the amount of jobs we create and how much more air traffic we're getting. We're seeing right now a tremendous increase in jet traffic coming in because our companies who are employing people, Midmark, of course, Whirlpool and others, they bring in people to watch, to look at their product. When they see this product, they say, "Okay, we're going to buy it." When they start buying their product, more people need to be hired. That is how we're going to judge the success of this. We have already seen, like I said, an increase in traffic, and we've already heard that Eldora is seeing an increase. This all works for the entire economy of Dark County. These people come in, first thing they want to do, they're going to have someplace to stay, someplace to eat. They're going to buy maybe a trinket here or there. They're going to go to a race. That improves the entire county, improves the entire economy of Dark County, which in turn makes everybody happier and which in turn helps everybody. So yeah, that's how we're going to judge it, by the upturn in traffic and by what we see, people spending and buying, and from the feedback we get from our constituents.
Mr. Kennedy?
Speaking as a pilot myself, when I go to fly somewhere and I look at an airport that I'm going to go to, I look and see what kind of services that airport provides. You know, if you're just, I'm not going to fly into an airport and just park, walk around the airport, get in the plane, and leave. You know, when you fly somewhere to go to an airport, you want services, you want an FBO, Field-Based Office. That field-based office is going to have, if you need anything worked on to your airplane, if you have anything that you need, like a ground transportation, those types of things are really, really important to an airport. And one of the reports I read for the county that said that when somebody flies in, they're going to want to go get a hamburger, a cheeseburger, they're going to want to go spend money in the county. Well, most people that use the general aviation airports aren't the leader jet pilot. They're the recreational flyer, and those people go into the county and do spend money, but they've got to have a way to do that. So I think a strong field-based office and a strong airport that has services would be, would be good.
Mr. Stegall, anymore?
As far as services go, yes, people can come into, general aviation people can come in. We do have an agreement with Enterprise Rent-A-Car. They can come in, rent a car, and drive all over Dark County if they want, and they have in the last several months. As far as a field-based operator, we are in the process of looking at one, somebody to work on planes. He's in the military right now. When he gets out, he's going to give us a look and see if we can't come up with some way to repair and work on aircraft. We're very excited about this. He's a young man that wants to settle his family here, and that's what we're all about here, so we are moving that way.
I want to do a follow-up on this one. If you're seeing the increase in traffic, and obviously summer's probably a better time to fly, why are you closing the airport for three months in the summer to do it rather than at another time when your airport won't be as busy?
The reason we're going to do it in the summer is because we have dirt work to do. Anybody that's in the construction business knows you can't push mud around and make it look right. Plus, we have to do a certain slope grade on the sides of the runway. Therefore, we had to do it in the summer. We also had to go along with the contractor's time. We put out bids for this, and Sunessi Corporation, or Sun, I guess that's the name of them, Sunessi, yeah. They're going to do the work, and they're going to start in May, should take them 71 days, should take less if the weather cooperates. So this is a very weather-sensitive project because of the grading we have to do, the dirt that has to be moved, and the shoulders that have to be redone. So that's why we're doing it in the summer. We didn't want it that way. You have to work when you can.
Mr. Kennedy? Thank you for that. And we'll move on to you for a question. You stated in the February 18th edition of the Early Bird, "I believe in a strong airport. It's very important. Is it the most important thing Dark County should be addressing now? Absolutely not. I believe it's something that's benefiting a few and not the whole." Then you went on to state, "You will see it through, going to have to." Mr. Stegall can address the cost of the County General Fund minus the grants in his rebuttal if he wishes, but the current Commission has called it an economic development tool. Do you see, do you still continue to see it as an economic development tool? If so, why or why not?
Well, but I see any airport, yes, as an economic development tool, but is that where we need to be focused at in Dark County right now? There's 300 jobs that are going unfilled right now in Dark County, 300 to 400. It's creating more jobs, really the main focus that we need to do, and yes, I'm a huge supporter of small business and other businesses, but I think our main concern is should be focusing on getting those jobs filled. And I know that you can't always have it both ways, that a strong economy means more jobs than it should have people, but I think our main focus should be on getting employable people into Dark County, into those positions, and not focus so much on the economic development of the airport.
Mr. Stegall?
Dark County has one of the most comprehensive workforce programs in the state of Ohio. Mr. Bowers is sitting back there, and he can account to that. What we're trying to do is trying to educate our workforce, our very limited workforce that we have now, trying to get them to the point where they can become employable. Problem is not that there, we don't have people, but we are down very few. But the problem is getting them to do skilled jobs and become employable. That's what we're working on. We work on that constantly. I don't know how many programs we have. I know that the Economic Development Office, this has been our focus for the last three or four years. Keep in mind this too, folks. Midmark would not be building a $44 million research center if their business wasn't growing. BASF wouldn't be doing $30 million worth of improvements if their businesses weren't growing. And the reason they're growing is because people are coming in and looking at their product and buying it. It helps everybody. These people will employ more people. These individuals are what keeps Dark County going, and we want, we want to be able to get our people and our workforce staff to, sorry, I spilled some.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Stegall, three minutes for this question. Judge Hine takes a lot of criticism for light sentences, but part of that is due to targeted community alternatives to prison funds that are known as TCAP funds. Not all counties choose to receive TCAP funds, such as Mercer County, and are not restricted by the number of persons they can send to prison. These funds must be accepted by the Commission, and were accepted earlier this year. Why do you believe these funds are important to Dark County?
This is a program that, we talked to Judge Hine about this extensively before we decided to go into it. Right now, this is a voluntary program. A lot of judges don't like it, but after talking with Mr. Hine, who's on a couple really good committees throughout the state, this is going to be a coming thing. We wanted to get in on the ground floor. The TCAP program is going to try to help people in all areas. I don't know myself how it's going to work. We've got a two-year plan that we're being funded for, to give it a try. After that, we will see, but I do believe that this is going to be mandatory, probably when all of a sudden done. Judge Hine takes an awful lot of heat for what he does. That is the one job in the county I would not want. Every year, they tell him how many people he can send, where they can send them, what he can do, and he does one heck of a job, in my opinion. I do not believe at all that Judge Hine is not doing his job. Like I said, that's the one job in the county I would never want. Judge Hine and the Commission work very closely together, and we're trying to just...
Now we're on to Mr. Kennedy. And this kind of goes along with what you've already said, but I'll just read the question. A Facebook post on March 14th, you said, "Food for thought this morning as I eat my breakfast. You could spend all your money, time, and resources creating new jobs in Dark County, expanding every business that we have, but if you don't take care of the people that live in the county, make sure they're able to work and have a large enough workforce to handle the new business, it's not going to do you any good." Currently, there are at least 300 positions, as you stated, in Dark County factories that are going to unfill because they cannot find the people to fill them. The focus shouldn't be on expanding the businesses that we already have. It should be making sure the citizens of Dark County... it should be making sure the citizens of Dark County are able to be employed. Once we are at 100% capacity, then let's focus on new business. Strong drug rehab, strong drug prevention, get people back into the workforce. People should be our main concern. What, in your opinion, should Dark County Economic Development Office, and perhaps the Coalition for a Healthy Dark County, or the Recovery and Wellness Center be doing different to make this happen?
Well, I'm not an expert, I don't, I don't, I, I, I never once ever say that I am. I have talked to people in the field, I've talked to drug rehab facilitators I've talked to, I went to a meeting at the White House a few weeks ago to a bunch of people who go out there in the community and, and sit and talk to people. And I can tell you some of their main concerns are after somebody gets out of jail, and they're in rehab, and they wanna get back into the workforce. Most of them don't have a driver's license, they're suspended. Some of the things that got them in the problem in the first place are the fact that they, you know, the trouble in the first place was, you know, in a car. You know, they get pulled over, they lose their license because it's a drug DUI, whatever offense. You know, or they don't have the money to even buy a car, they've had to pay court costs, fines, fees, they've been out of work, they've been in jail. So transportation for these people is a huge concern. And, and, you know, there, there are things out there for these people, but I, I, I think there, there seems to be a disconnect between, once they get out of jail and getting them, and once they wanna go back to work. And then when they don't have transportation, they're sitting around their house, their buddies come over, you know, they start doing drugs again, you know, and they start selling drugs again. They get, they, it's just a vicious cycle, they keep going back and forth, back and forth. And also, you know, I, I think it needs to be addressed.
Mr. Steigl.
Our jobs and family services, Tri-County Board of Mental Health, Wellness and Recovery Center, they all work very closely together to try to help these people, and they do a heck of a good job. We have a lot of programs that we're trying to do to help people. As far as, the one part about that Mr. Kennedy's article in the paper I did not like, he said, "We shouldn't help the companies that are expanding here." That's exactly what we wanna do. We want companies to, that are expanding here, when they expand here, they'll stay here. They have a bigger footprint here, they're more invested in our community, that is what we want. Getting them the workers is our problem, and we're working on that, very hard through the Economic Development Office. We do have a program called Taking Charge of Your Life, where we teach these people a few things, and then we send them on to a second and third stop. That has a 70% success rate of people getting more education or getting a job. There's not another program in the state like it, and I'm very proud to be a part of it.
Mr. Kennedy, anything else?
I don't think I said that I didn't want the job, I didn't want current companies to expand. I said that I didn't want, the, the main focus shouldn't be on expansion, it should be on getting, you know, our job as commissioners, you know, they can expand all they want to. Our job as commissioners is to get people back in the workforce, that's what I meant by that.
Okay, Mr. Steigl. "The county's assets are diminishing for what seems to be a temporary gain. Thus far, the county has established an industrial park in the area where the Dark County farm once was, and property was sold to ODOT and the Irwin Brothers. The county home is currently on the market. Without a crystal ball to foresee future needs, is it wise to be selling off our assets?"
The South Industrial Park was sold to, we started it for a need, because at the time, when we started it, the Dark County Economic Development Office was looking for places to put companies. We had no land available. Site selectors were looking for site-ready places, and we didn't have any. Mike Rhodes came in one morning and said, "Let's use the South Farm for that." And we did, and so far, it's turned out very well. We've got ODOT in there so far, we've got the Irwin Brothers in there, so it's accomplished its deal. Plus, it has saved the ground they have out of their industrial park for the city, and saved them for what they wanna do. They didn't wanna have ODOT out there because it's just a lateral move. They wanna save their ground for expansion. As far as the county home, it's an anachronism, there's only 15 left, I think, in the whole state of Ohio. County homes cannot do what, what can happen now under the new medical rules that go on here in, in the country. We could do better for those people, and that's why we did it. We have 15 people out there when we closed it. Each one of those people are in a much better situation now than they were in our home. Why? Because they can still come and go as they please. They have psychiatrists on staff, psychologists, they have workforce people that help them out. It's much better for them, and if you can do something to help somebody and make it better for them, why wouldn't you? So we've moved that notch that way, because this is where we see the future. And this is what I think, I think we've made the right move so far, and I'm, I'm not at all ashamed of it.
Mr. Kennedy.
I don't think we should be selling off assets, I think we should be using the assets we have at a, to our, to our advantage. I mean, I know the county home is probably full of asbestos and probably needs a lot of rehab, but I don't see why that can't be used as some kind of drug rehab, more beds, something. I, I think that we should just be able to use our assets in a better way.
Well, one of the reasons we put the county home up for sale is because we had some very interested people wanting to do drug rehab. We also have our jobs and family services looking to do some things out there, so it's not just gonna set idle. We're working on doing things for the county with that building.
And a follow-up from Mr. Kennedy on, on that answer. Do you see Dark County as providing the services for drug rehab if it were to go into that facility? Or do you have somebody else in mind to?
Anybody that would wanna do it. I know currently, one of the high school, one of the old junior highs over here in, in Greenville's, someone's looking at putting, making that into a drug rehab facility. I mean, if somebody wants to buy it and make it a drug rehab facility, I don't see a problem with that whatsoever. I'm not about growing government or making government bigger at all. I don't think we should be, you know, doing that, but if, if, we should be finding the best people for the job to be doing that job, absolutely.
Mr. Steigl.
I believe the old axiom that whatever government can do, the private sector can do better. I do believe that the county home has been looked at by some people, but we wanna do what's best for Dark County, we just don't wanna sell it, make a profit, and go on. When we sell it, we're gonna make sure it's sold to the right people, they have the right idea, and they're gonna benefit the people of Dark County.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, again, on your Facebook page, and, and I will say, just because you haven't had any, you have to go with what we can find. Again, on your Facebook page, you had a post January 5th linked to a local Facebook page that says, "Another great article put out about the corruption in Dark County. Please share and vote on May 8th. Do you believe the current slated commissioners, including Mr. Steigl, are corrupt, and why? And do you have any validation?"
Corruption probably wasn't the best word. Miss Alex, I mean, I, I don't believe that, and like I said before, I don't believe that everything you see on Facebook should be taken at 100%. If that's the case, half the people in here, you know, probably be ashamed. But I, you know, the, the thing about the, the corruption, I, I believe that the funds, there, there are, there are things that are being done in the county. You know, and I, unfortunately, I don't have, you know, facts and figures here in front of me, but there's things involved in the county that the money could be allocated in better ways. You know, and that's, you know, I, I think part of my thing about being transparent and making sure that everything is seen, he said that, you know, "Oh, we, we decide what we wanna put out there and let you decide, we will decide what you wanna see." I, I think it all should be out there, all bids, all contracts, everything should be out, out in the open, out in the public. You know, if you get five bids from five different companies for a specific job, all those five bids should be read in, in their entirety. When you're talking about employment, new jobs, anything in the county, it all should be out there. So I, I, I think my, my message is more about transparency than corruption.
Mr. Steigl.
I think Mr. Kennedy needs to take a look at our, what we put out on the internet and what we do in our sessions. We do put all contract bids out there, we have to, it's the law. What we put out, you can read, you can have, you can come get. It's public record, folks, we can't hide it. This, this idea that we are hiding things is ridiculous, because if we had been hiding things all along, somebody surely would have filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission with us, or the Attorney General's Office. No complaints have ever been filed, a lot of people make a lot of noise about filing it. "Oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that," but they don't do anything. We're as open as anybody in the state of Ohio. And all you have to do, if you wanna see something, you can call, we'll make sure you get it. That's what we're all about. This transparency issue is really a non-issue at all, if you ask me.
And I'll do a follow-up for Mr. Kennedy on this, and it kinda goes back to my first question on Mr. Steigl, and I don't think that you gave an answer on to whether you believe that the, the way the commission office is set up now with all three commissioners in that office, do you believe that that's the way it should keep going?
No, I, I think there's a lot of things that are talked about behind closed doors that we don't ever find out about. And I think that if the three commissioners in a room together are talking, it should be in public, public earshot. And it should be recorded, so everyone can hear it.
Mr. Steigl.
Like I said, the doors are open, if you wanna come in and sit down and listen to us, you're more than welcome. There's absolutely nothing we've got to hide. I don't know why we even wanna hide it. Frankly, all three of us, I know, we're proud of what we're doing. We have done an excellent job, in my opinion. I don't know why we would hide anything from the public. I don't know how we do hide things, like I said, I do Commissioner's Corner, I do coffee with the commissioner. Our doors are open every day we're there. You know, it's up to the citizen's rate, if they wanna come in and find out what we're doing, come on in, we'll be more than happy to tell you, we'll even give you a cup of coffee if you want it.
All right. Moving on, Mr. Steigl. "In April 2017, and this goes back to the issue we were just talking about somewhat, it was announced the Tri-County Board of Mental Health was considering the county home property. And August 2017, the commission, commission board made the plans to close the county home by September 30th, 2017. Thus far, there has been no action on the property. Why was it necessary to close the county home in September if there wasn't a guaranteed deal to sell the property?"
We had planned to close the county home anyway, because like I said, we, you gotta remember, that was one of the two offices in Dark County that are 24/7/365, that and the sheriff's office. We had 15 people in a 63-bed building. It cost us just about as much to keep it open for those 15 as it did for 63. We have made plans, like I said, to close it already. It just so happened that Tri-County Mental Health was interested in the building, along with several other people. We are still waiting to hear, a lot of it has to do with funding. I know Tri-County Mental Health was waiting on to see what the capital budget would do, so were some other people, and some other people were looking for private funding. So the plan had already been made, it wasn't a big secret. Tri-County Mental Health was just one of the ones that looked at the building, so. That's why we already made the plan to close it, and we did.
Mr. Kennedy.
The only thing I have to ask about that is I've heard rumors that the reason why nothing's been done to the county home yet is because your county engineer wants a new office, and then that possibly is a new location for that.
Yeah, that's, that's a rumor.
So there's, there's no truth to that rumor?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Are there currently any other discussions or considerations for that building?
Yes, there are. We have, we're talking about maybe keeping it in the county and doing something with it ourselves. We'll keep that quiet for the time, because we're looking into funding and how it would work out, and the people that are working with us, we're trying to make sure it'll work. Yeah, we do have, we do have plans for the building.
Mr. Kennedy, anything else?
No.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. Kennedy. "In an interview with the Early Bird for the February 18th edition, you criticized the Health Department citing stringent requirements that weren't here for the six years prior that all of a sudden are now in place. What can a commissioner do to lessen the requirements imposed by the Health Department? And what else do you believe the county needs to do to lessen restrictions overall?"
Well, this was addressed in our last debate, that, you know, and I, I just, until you're in the system, until you're in there, obviously, you're not gonna know how everything functions. But I, I just, I, I can't believe for the life of me that a county organization like the Health Department can be allowed to be run amok and do whatever they wanna do without any kind of oversight whatsoever. From what everyone's telling me, oh, they have a board, but there's really nothing that we can do, because, you know, they pretty much make up their own rules. I've literally had a health inspector tell me, "Yes, the state and the federal guidelines say that you're allowed to do this, but we have our own rules, we don't really care, we, it doesn't matter what the state or federal government says." To, to me, that's, to me, that's an aggressive government entity in, in a time when we're trying to back down government involvement in our life. You know, the requirements that they placed on us, and, and we'll bring back to Brenda's Beanery, they came in, there was a mop bucket sink that wasn't to their standards, and what, but it was okay for the feds and the state, but it would cost us almost, almost $1,000 to redo. I mean, for a small business, $1,000 isn't a drop in the bucket, especially when you're barely making as it is. And I've talked to several restaurant owners that have the same problem. They have a, a hand washing sink that's, that's three feet further away from the kitchen than what they say it would be, and they have to come in and move it. I mean, these are just things, to me, that are just ridiculous.
Mr. Steigl.
There are two things the Dark County Commissioners that have our name on them that we have absolutely no control over. One of them's the Dark County Fair Board, the other one's the Dark County Health Department. The Dark County Health Department is run by a board. We have one representative on that board. If you wanna change the Dark County Health Department, you must change the board. We don't have a lot of influence with that. With our one man, we do, we have to influence the others. As far as state and federal regulations versus local, federal government, every once in a while, and the state government, in their infinite wisdom, realize that a one-size-fits-all just really doesn't work. So they have allowed local health departments to do their ruling. Whether you like those rules or not, they think it's in the best interests of Dark County. They don't do them arbitrarily, they do them to help everybody stay safe and healthy in Dark County. I think this is the one time that the federal government, the state government actually got it right, but if you don't like the way the Health Department runs, go to their meetings, get people to run for the board, and change it. That's your prerogative.
Anything else, Mr. Kennedy?
No, that's it, that's good.
Okay. "Mr. Steigl, the steps to the courthouse are crumbling, and plans to replace them have been discussed for at least a year and a half. This week, you, you hired an architect. Was the project scheduled to be completed in 2017? I know it was talked about, and I know that is, that had come up last year. Did it get pushed back, and why, and will it be completed this year?"
Will it be completed this year? We certainly hope so. That is what we're, our architect is telling us, that they're gonna try to push and get it done by the end of the year. The reason it did not get done last year is when you're dealing with a lot of people. A lot of people have different ideas about what they want for their courthouse. One of the people in the courthouse said, "I would like to try and get a, I would like to take some time and try to get a plan for the steps of the courthouse." We never did see that plan, we kept asking for it, and the gentleman couldn't get it to us. So that's why it was put off for last year. We didn't wanna do it when the weather was cold, because of the contract, because of the concrete that's going down. So this year, we're gonna try to start as soon as possible, as soon as we get the final plan that we want for the steps. Of course, it is a really nice, pretty old building, and we wanna make it period correct for this courthouse. The steps that are there now are not period correct. In other words, in 1874, when they built that courthouse, you did not see that style's house. So we're gonna try to make it period correct to fit with the downtown decor and with the, with the way it should look.
Okay. Then moving on to Mr. Kennedy, and we may be able to get all, all of my questions in. Again, in the Early Bird interview, you, you stated, "Once we moved back here full-time, we saw a decline in business and the overall happiness of Dark Countyans." What was this statement based on, and how do you measure the state of motions and decline in business for the county?
Well, a lot of people don't, well, most, some people might know this, but there's actually a happiness rating that, that's done. And I've read articles on this, and, and in, in talking to people in my business at the winery, at the beanery, and at other places that I've gone to, I talk to them about how they feel in the county, and how they feel their overall happiness is in living here. If you go to, and I talked about this to somebody the other day, they went into a high school, and they said, "How many people, if you were to leave right, if, if you graduate tomorrow, how many people would stay in Dark County?" 85 to 90% of the high school graduates wouldn't raise their hands and say they'd leave, they wouldn't stay. They feel that there's nothing here for them, they feel that, that Dark County is being, Greenville is being compared to Dayton when it comes to, you know, the, the neighborhoods, the slums, the drug problem, things like that, that, you know, people just aren't, they, they don't feel that anybody gets along. Government doesn't get along with this government, this city doesn't get along with this city. The Annie Oakley Days doesn't get along with Gathering at the Gars. Steam Thrashers doesn't get along with, you know, it's just, there, there's so many different organizations and groups that don't get along, and you see this in the newspapers, in media, in social media, what have you, where there's just not a cohesiveness to this county, it doesn't feel that way anymore. I mean, growing up, here, I spent the first, you know, 18 years of my life here, and it's, it's, it's much different. And you're gonna have that anywhere, you know, industrial decline, what have you. You're, you're gonna have that in any community, but for some reason, I, I never thought I'd see it in Dark County, just because of the way that we are as a people. But I've talked to many people that are outside the county, inside the county, and they, they don't feel that, that, that people are just happy to live here. That's, that's, that's what I meant by that.
Mr. Steigl.
Of all the statements Mr. Kennedy has made, I think the one about he hasn't seen any progress in Dark County may be the lamest. In the last eight years, like I've said, over 2,200 people have been employed, or we've created jobs. Every business we've got, major business, has added folks. Our Economic Development Office is one of the best in the state, and we're leading in this area, in so many areas. Workforce development, you name it. People from the state come down all the time, want to know what we're doing here. People from the state come down all the time, want to know what we're doing here. We have job fairs, we have everything going on here. As far as the happiness index, I remember when I was growing up, if you'd asked me did I want to stay in Dark County, I'd probably said no. But through our website, HometownOpportunity.com, what we're starting to see now is these people that have moved away, now they're looking back here. And they're saying, "You know what? Dark County and our little area, western part of Ohio, they're a good place to live, and I want to raise my family here." So, we are starting to see some movement back here. But you take a high school kid that wants to leave, they all do, I did too, but look, here I am.
Anything else, Mr. Kennedy?
No, I don't. I think economic development and building, and building the right type of jobs helps tremendously. I mean, of course, working in a factory at $8 an hour, you know, if you build 500 of those, you know, you're going to have economic development. I think bringing the county together as a whole is more of what I meant there than anything else, and making Dark County more of a place where people want to move to and want to move back to and want to raise their family.
Excellent. Mr. Steigl, I have two more questions, and one for each of you, so I'm going to get through them, and then we'll get into the final statements from both of you. Mr. Steigl, on January 29th, the Commission reduced the number of participants on the Countywide Public Safety Communication System Advisory Committee, to which you voted to do so. Yes, voted yes. The city chose, yes, the city chose not to take part in the ODNR grant for radios and have gone on their own purchased equipment. At the same meeting, your fellow Commissioner Mike Rhodes stated they have nothing with us on the communication end of it, yet part of the reason to switch to Mark's radio on the county and city end of things was for better communication between departments. Why do you believe it was necessary to drop the city's representative from this committee?
The city wanted to go their own way with their own radios and their own system. They were not a part of what the whole rest of the county was going to do. The last time they had a meeting or two or three, the city did not show up. This was not a vindictive thing, as most people think it is. This was just us cleaning up some paperwork. Of course, we're going to work with the city and their Mark system. That was the whole idea, to get everybody on board with this. But they used, they wanted to buy different radios, they wanted to do different things, they were not in the same plan we were in, so we decided to replace them with somebody who was on our plan. Now, we're going to still communicate with them, we're still going to work with them, but they're just not on, they're not doing and buying what we're doing. Let's put it that way.
Mr. Kennedy, anything on that?
Just goes back to the point where people see a breakdown in the government, they don't see where people are getting along, and that's my only comeback on that one.
Mr. Steigl, anything else?
Wasn't about getting along, it's just they wanted to do their own thing.
And that leads me to a question basically on that. There's been some friction between the city and county at times over the years. Can you be a peacemaker between the county and city leaders, and how do you plan on doing that?
Well, I think it's just being human. I think you can bring people together when you set aside your own agenda and your own ego, and you listen to what other people say. Try to take that into account and develop a plan based on that. I think that when you get a large group of people with many different ideas, it's going to take some time to get it done, you know, and if you can't get it done the first try, you try again. I think getting along with not only Greenville, the city of Greenville, but every city should be, you know, part of what, as a commission, you want to see done. You want to see our K&M, Greenville, Ansonia, all, everyone getting along and getting together, sharing resources, and doing the best you can to make our county and the government strong and work together well.
Mr. Steigl.
That is the job of the Dark County Committee that we have together, where all the counties, or all the counties' towns, and all the villages, and all the cities. Once a month, we get together, and the CIC Board, and we discuss things that are going to make the entire county go. So, this perception that we don't get along is foolhardy. As far as making peace with the city, when I was growing up, I had a little brother, and we fought like cats and dogs, but we always made peace. We're not always going to agree with everything all the city wants to do, or what our can or whatever, but the thing is to get past that, and we've gotten past that. As far as being a peacemaker, I am, I have become very good friends with several people on the council, and several people that were on the council. I like them, we can talk together, but we don't always have to agree. One thing we do all agree on is we're going to try to do everything we can to make things better for Dark County. That is the one thing we all agree on.
Mr. Kennedy, anything else? All right, then we will move into the closing statements, and I think it's two minutes, correct?
Yes.
Two minutes for each of you, and Mr. Kennedy, you will begin.
Well, as I said, you know, my biggest platform here is that government transparency. I want to see us go more towards where everything that is done in the Commission inside of that building, when three people are sitting there, is either being recorded, being filmed, where everyone has the opportunity to see it, where we don't have to just request it, come in and sit down and ask for it, that it's there and it's open. I think that is one of the major concerns that I hear when I talk to people, that they are being told, "Well, this is what's getting done." Well, where was the discussion that led up to that? Where was everyone talking about, you know, where was everything that led up to that decision? "Well, we made, we talked about that, and this is the decision we made." Well, I think there needs to be discussion in there, and that everybody in the county has an opportunity to have their word be heard when it comes to making these decisions, and not just the Commissioners making decisions and then throwing it out there. So, I think my main running plat, the main thing that I want to see done is more government transparency. Thank you.
Mr. Steigl, two minutes.
My opponent has talked a lot about things he'd like to change, but he hadn't really given any specifics, other than he wants us to be more transparent. I suppose we could be a lot more transparent if we did put things on TV and stuff, but that's going to take us time to figure out what's best for everybody. We're not against doing that. Now's maybe the time to do it. I've been a Commissioner for eight years, and in that eight years, I have never once taken a bribe, taken a kickback, done any, and we're not corrupt. We take our job very seriously. I love this job.